Before, what are you going to make say about those two items being continued?
At the outset.
At the outset.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, why don't we get started here? So, good evening. So, we're here for the meeting of the Town of Danvers Planning Board. It is just a little bit past seven o'clock here today on February 25th, 2025. We're here at Danvers Town Hall in the Toomey Room. My name's Louis George. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm joined here today by Gene Hartnett, who's our clerk, as well as Michael Decoulis, who's a member. So, we do have a quorum currently present. And I did want to mention, just as at the outset, we do have a number of agenda items today. And the third and the fourth items on the agenda with respect to Trask Lane and then 50 Independence Way, there will be a continuance on these items. So, just so folks who are aware of that, okay? So, then let's move on, then. Let's go to the first agenda item. Okay, the first agenda item. Oh, I was going to say, I'm sorry, also Josh Morris is here for the Town Staff is here with us today. And so, why don't we begin with the first agenda item is the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision, formerly 69 North Street, MAP 15, Lot 27. A request by Chatham Estates LLC for the release of the performance guarantee for the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision. And so, we have a gentleman at the podium. If you could introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, John Colentoni, one of the partners, and Daryl Sanders with me, the other partner.
Good evening.
First of all, great to be back here on a simpler item. And we'd really like to thank Josh for all his hard work and walking us through the process and keeping us on the straight and narrow. So, we're here for the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision, formerly 69 North Street, MAP 15, Lot 27. And we're requesting for the Chatham Estates LLC for the release of the performance guarantee for the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision. And the engineering departments, Steve King and Henry Clark, we have their blessing, and we're ready. So, that's what we're here for.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Very good. Thank you. I'm going to turn things over now to the Board to see if they have any questions. I do notice as well, in our materials, we have the, we do have the memorandum from Stephen King dated February 21st, 2025. So, just in terms of questions, Gene, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I took a drive down there today, and it looks good.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Mike Decoulis, do you have any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm just taking a look here, just not really a question, but I guess just a comment. So, and if I recall here, when this was approved, you know, back, you know, a while back, and I think this is noted in the engineering memo as well, well, I think under the bond has been completed and has been found to be satisfactory with the engineering division. And they also noted as well that the 755-foot chain-link fence around the SWMA was deleted from the planning board decision at the request of the developer, and it was approved by Town Staff. And so, I think that was, I believe that there was a condition, and Josh, correct me, there was a condition in the original approval with respect to the fence that was around the retaining area, but...
Yep, yep. So, in January of 2022, during the permitting process for the subdivision, there was a conversation between the developer and the town about a fence around the Stormwater Basin. And at the time, the condition was basically, put the fence on the plan, but once the Stormwater System is installed, that Town Staff would review to see if the Stormwater System was working properly and was functioning. And it was up to Town Staff whether it was deemed a fence was necessary. And Town Staff, in its review with Engineering and Planning Departments, decided that in this instance, the fence was not needed or required. So, it was not ultimately installed, but it was under, you know, the Town Staff reviewed the item as the condition was written, so.
Got it, so, okay, very good. Okay, so, sounds good. And so, the next step of the, so obviously, this is a request for a, for a reduction of really of the full amount of the guarantee. Is that correct, Josh?
Yes, that's right, yep. It's a request, right. It's ultimately actually a release of the performance guarantee in its entirety.
Okay, got it, okay. And then, so, and then the next step would be something would be, once we vote on this today, there'll be something filed with...
Yep, there would be, yep, there will be a decision or document that I'll provide to the developer to be recorded, and it could be provided to the bank, or whatever the purposes needed, whatever, however, whoever needs the document, it would be available.
Great, okay, sounds, sounds good. This is, I don't have any further questions, but I'm happy that the, you know, Engineering signed off on, that's great. Is there, I know this is not a pub, this is not a public hearing, but if there are any, since we do have members of the public here, do any members of the public have any questions or comments with respect to this? Okay, all right, then, hearing none, I guess I could entertain a, I guess it'd be, I'd entertain a motion for the release of the performance guarantee for the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision.
I don't know if you need to read it in its entirety, but if you'd like to, that's fine.
Okay. Certificate of Completion and Release of Municipal Interest in Performance Security. The undersigned being a majority of the Planning Board of the Town of Danvers have determined that the construction of ways and installation of municipal services shown on the plan entitled "Chatham Estates, Danvers, Mass.," dated May 25th, 2021, revised through February 7th, 2022, known as the Chatham Estates Definitive Subdivision, have been fully and satisfactorily completed by the applicant in accordance with the board's rules and regulations to serve all lots. The plan can be found in the Southern Essex District Registry of Deeds as Book 40829, page 358. The performance of the subdivision is secured by $591,975.24, held under a tripartite agreement. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81- U, and in consideration of completion of said construction and installation, the Danvers Planning Board hereby releases its interest in the performance security referred to above, executed as of the 25th day of February 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay.
Thank you.
It passes, very good. So, good luck, yeah, thank you, thank you for your work. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item here is, this is the Beaver Brook Woods Definitive Subdivision. This is 303 to 333 Maple Street. A request by Beaver Brook Woods LLC for a reduction in the performance guarantee for the Beaver Brook Woods Definitive Subdivision. So, Mr. Colentoni?
So, for the record, John Colentoni for Beaver Brook Woods Definitive Subdivision, and we're requesting by Beaver Brook Woods LLC for a reduction in the performance guarantee for the Beaver Brook Woods Definitive Subdivision. So, basically, we were at about $240,000 on the tripartee. The Engineering Department, which we agree with them, is bringing it down to $17,593 and some change, I believe.
I think we have $17,600, I think was the...
Seventeen thousand, okay. And we have no problem with that, we agree with it. There's a couple items that we would have already had done, but with the weather the last 30 days with the frost, we haven't been able to do that. So, we're going to go till April 15th. We should have it completed in March if the weather keeps going in the direction that it is, but we'll have until April 15th, and it'll be completed by then. So, we're basically asking if we can bring the tripartee down to that figure that the Engineering Department suggested.
Okay, very good, okay, sounds good. Any questions by members of the Board? Gene, any questions for Mr. Colentoni?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mike, any questions at all?
No questions.
Okay. And I think that the, I think you answered my questions in terms of, so in terms of timing, we're looking at, so really, it seems like it's pretty close to the finish line, right?
Yeah, the items are not difficult at all, it's just a matter of the weather with the frost, that was it.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, that sounds good. Josh, anything from staff at all with respect to this?
Nope, I think the two big, just the two big pieces is just, you're right, the time, just the April 15th, 2025, and then also the, just the amount, right? The request is a reduction from the existing $240,932.85 to the remaining $17,600, which was established, or, you know, and agreed upon by the Engineering Division. And the memo that was in the packet, it just lists a couple of those kind of bulleted kind of, I don't, minor, items minor in nature.
Sure.
But it's definitely close, so...
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Now, this is not a, this isn't a public hearing, but just since we do have members of the public here, does any members of the public have any, any questions or comments with respect to this request? Okay, and let's come back to the, come back to the Board. So, it looks like we will need, I see in the packet here, this was, this would be a seventh modification to the tripartite agreement, so I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay. Seventh modification to the tripartite agreement. References made to a certain tripartite agreement dated December 8th, 2020, by and between Beaver Brook Woods LLC, here and after referred to as the developer, and Bank Gloucester, a banking corporation having a usual place of business at 160 Main Street Gloucester, Massachusetts, 01930, here and after referred to as the bank, and the Planning Board of the Town of Danvers, here and after referred to as the Board. Whereas, the developer has completed a significant amount of the subdivision site work, and whereas the developer requires additional time to complete the subdivision work, including remaining site work and preparation of engineering certificate and as-built drawings, and whereas all parties to this agreement desire to secure and guarantee the full and faithful construction of the ways and installation of municipal services as shown on the plan. Now, therefore, for valuable consideration, the adequacy and receipt of which are hereby acknowledged, the parties agree as follows. One, the time for completion of the developer's obligations is extended from November 30th, 2024, to April 15th, 2025, unless such date is further extended by a written amendment hereof entered into by agreement of the parties heretofore. Two, by a vote of the Planning Board on February 25th, 2025, the remaining balance held under the tripartite agreement is reduced from $240,932.85 to $17,600 to secure the remaining incomplete work. Three, the developer will adhere to all the conditions in the Danvers Engineering Division memorandum dated February 21st, 2025. All, for all other items and conditions of the tripartite agreement not expressly amended hereby, remain in full force and effect, executed as a sealed instrument this 25th day of February 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mike Decoulis. Any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion passes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck. Okay. So, let's move on to the next agenda item here. Which is Trask Lane Partial Release of Covenant. And so, this is a request for a partial release of covenant established on August 28th, 1972, which is associated with the definitive subdivision plan entitled, Proposed Access to Folly Hill Development, Danvers, Massachusetts, and dated June 2nd, 1972, and also known as Trask Lane, Danvers, Mass. Okay, and I think that, Josh, do we have a, an update on this? I think there was a...
Yes.
Request for a continuance?
Yes, that's right. The development teams provided an email today requesting this application be, be continued to our March 25th, 2025 meeting, so...
Okay. Okay, very good. And is there anything, so I guess when, you know, so obviously, we can't discuss the, I guess we can't discuss the merits of anything, of what was sort of, do we know what the status is at all? Can we give a little bit of an update?
Sure. We did receive a peer review document from Howard Sun Hudson, which, who was our consultant, who was our third-party consultant. And so, that should be in your packets, that was sent to the development team. And so, in terms of next steps between now and March 25th, 2025, we will likely receive a response from, from the development team as a response to our third-party's engineering memo, or our third-party's memo, traffic memo. As we speak right now, I think at that meeting on the 25th, that those two documents will likely be discussed, and I am...
So, the traffic peer review document and what other documents?
And then, the, I'm anticipating that the development team will then have a response to our third-party from, so our third-party peer reviewers, Howard Sun Hudson, and their traffic engineer for the development will respond to that memo over the next couple weeks.
Okay.
And so, that will likely be the conversation at the meeting on the 25th, March 25th. And I am trying to ensure that Town Council is at that meeting, so...
So, we anticipate then that this will be a, I know, so this is not the very next meeting, so this is the meeting following that, so we anticipate that we will have some, they'll be present, we'll have a discussion at that meeting.
Yes, as we speak right now, that is the, that's what I foresee happening.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So, what do you need from, so you need from us a, we need to have a motion to...
Continue this, this Trask Lane Partial Release of Covenant application to March 25th, 2025.
Gene, do you want to?
So moved.
Second.
Is that sufficient?
I guess if the Board could say that, if Gene could say that motion not...
Okay.
Yes, there.
I make a motion, we continue the Trask Lane Partial Release of Covenant to the March 25th, 2025 meeting.
Okay, very good. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mike Decoulis. Any discussion on this, this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, so, very good. Okay. And very, and for the minutes here, Jim Sears came, and he's, he participated in the Trask Lane discussion just a moment ago. Okay, great. And so, let's move on to the next agenda item here, which I think also is going to be, I think you indicated that we also are looking at a continuance. This is a public hearing for 50 Independence Way. This is a request for site plan review pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw submitted by Chick-fil-A, care of bowler engineering for property in the Commercial 3, C3 zoning district. The applicant proposes a standalone food restaurant with a drive-through and associated site modifications, MAP 63, Lot 5, Unit 1. So, Josh, could you give us an update on what is going on with respect to that application?
So, the applicant team similarly sent an email to continue the assignment at the next meeting. I believe the development team was just in the process of kind of finalizing the plan a little bit more. And so, we just, they weren't ready maybe to, I think they just wanted to finalize the plan a little bit more, so they thought it might be beneficial just to continue to the next meeting.
And without getting into the merits of this, of this application, this is the, just the location of, just maybe members of the public.
Sure.
This is in the Liberty Tree Mall area, correct?
This is, yep, this is a site that's currently the Friendly Toast Building. The application is proposing to demolish that existing building and build a new, what we call in the zoning bylaw, a restaurant with a drive-through use, which is a by-right use, but because of the new building, it needs a site plan review from the Planning Board. It's not our typical drive-through situation, it will have three drive-throughs.
I'm sorry, could you, could you speak up a little bit, sorry?
Yeah, it's not the typical drive-through that we generally see in town, it has two, kind of, two drive-through lanes and then a third lane for mobile orders, but when they're here at a future meeting, we could get into the, get into the application a little bit more, but...
So, this would be, is it three drive-throughs, is that, as, as, per the application? Okay. And so, this is a request for, they're requesting that it be continued to our next meeting of March 11th.
That's correct.
Okay. Because you'll need a motion from us in that regard.
That's right.
Gene, can you make a motion?
Yep, I make a motion that we continue the 50 Independence Way public hearing to our net, next meeting, March 11th, 2025.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mike Decoulis. Okay, very good. Any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, so that's moved, moved on, all right. Let's, the next agenda item here, I think we have minutes. And so, these are the Planning Board minutes from our January 28th, 2025 meeting. Okay. Everybody had a chance to review it, and... Okay. May entertain a motion to, to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Jim, first, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. So, let's, so that's it for the, the agenda that we do have. You know, this is the usual part, we talk about any sort of updates or things that are coming up. I know we've had, just in terms of since we've last met, we had the, we had town meeting. And so, you know, all of the, you know, all of the zoning articles from town meeting were approved with the exception of the lighting article. And I know that was referred back to, to the Planning Board. So, we'll be having, it looks like we'll be having some further, further review of that. And, you know, because that was a public hearing, I assume we would, we would need to reopen the public hearing on that.
Yes, we would have to, right, we'd have to re, because it was closed with the Planning Board, we, what, ten, probably likely a special town meeting in February of 2026, I mean, potentially, that's not in stone, but in our office, we view that that's potential. We would, similarly, to what we've been doing the past couple of years, we would probably have several kind of zoning amendment-type articles, and that lighting would be one of the several items that we would probably propose.
Yeah, without getting into the merits of it, I know there was some, I think there were, I mean, I think there was some, you know, I think there were some concerns raised at town meeting floor at the, with respect to that, and so ultimately, it was voted to refer it back to the Planning Board. So, we'll keep, so we'll continue on, on that. We also do have, I think you mentioned as well, we have a, and there was a meeting that, that was here that I attended a couple of weeks ago, I think it was on February 12th, dealing with a housing production plan. And so, I believe that that is, and it was, it was a well-attended, well-attended meeting. And, and so, and it's our, you know, it's my understanding that that is ultimately that the, the, the housing production plan, that proposal is coming, will be coming to us for discussion and ultimately a vote, is that...
That's correct, yep. So, I think as we speak right now... the, the idea, either Aaron or Brian, but probably likely Aaron, either at the March 11th meeting, which is looking very likely that it's the March 11th and not March 25th, at March 11th, the idea is that we would, we would have a discussion and, with the board and talk through that housing production plan. I guess, I put it in the board packet and I sent it around to the group. Between now and our next meeting, if anyone in the group has any questions or comments or concerns with the plan, I guess I, I would request that you just, if you, if you kind of, if you could read through it and if you had any comments or questions or modifications, if you could just let me know. And then when we have it as a discussion item in this, at a board meeting, we can kind of talk through, we could talk through the comments or
So I think it would be anticipated that we would be talking, having a meeting to discuss it, to discuss it. And then at some, you know, you know, maybe likely subsequent meeting where actually we would have a, have a vote on it. Would that be?
Yes, I think that's the, that's the plan. That's the, that's, I think, what we're thinking.
And for members of the public who may not have attended the meeting on the 12th here, the housing production plan is that, that will be, or it is on the town website?
It is, it is, it is on the website, yes. On the, if you Google Danvers, actually, I've been writing, yeah, I've been Googling Danvers Housing Production Plan and it's, I think the first thing that pops up. There's a, on that page, there's three or, three to five other documents, but I believe today we made sure to put up the latest and greatest, which is as we speak, has a December 17th, 2024 date.
December 17th, 2024?
Yeah.
Yeah, because if I recall, there was an earlier version, like from the housing production plan, from a, from a, from a past housing production plan that was there.
And I took it down, we took it down today to put the latest and greatest, so.
Okay, so the latest is up there. So if people have any, and obviously if people have questions as well, I think they could reach out to the planning office as well.
You could, yep, send me an email or give me a call or any of that, any, we, course, any, any type of correspondence is happy, happy for any correspondence.
Great. Okay. That sounds good. All right. Any, so that's, so those are sort of things, things coming up. Just wanted to say, anything else in terms of fellow, fellow board members or, oh?
I just have one other item, something that Brian, Kelly, the plan director, wanted me to share with the group and the town and everyone watching and the board. We are working, the, the town and the planning office is working with MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. It's a regional planning agency for Metro Boston. We are working on putting together, what it's, what we're calling is a transportation needs assessment. We're just trying to look at ways that we could improve transportation in town. And the beginning of this process, we are trying to get a bunch of folks to do like a five to 10-minute survey. We would really like to get, have a decent, a large amount of kind of correspondent, large amount of people responding to the survey. We're having a little bit of difficulty, you know, finding people. So it would be great for people to spend the five or 10 minutes doing it.
How do people find out about the survey? That's a
Yeah, I could, I have it, I have a pamphlet right here at least, but I could put it on the website. And there's a QR code.
It's a QR code, so people in the room here could actually do the QR code?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And there's a website on here, so. If I recommend just everyone. So it would be for anyone who works in town, lives in town, has property in town. So pretty much, you don't have to, you don't have to be a resident.
I've taken the survey, my wife's taken the survey, I think it's, yeah, it doesn't take that long.
Yeah. So if I could just, that would be my, my shout-out for the evening.
Okay. Sounds good.
Can I ask a question, Lou? Just on the, the information you sent out on the Danvers Housing. Just a question on the ADUs and how they're gonna relate vis-à-vis the EFLA that we already passed in town. Maybe you can ask town council as far as, we have, on those particular projects, those are deed restricted. So there's a title issue in that, in the title to those properties, they have a restriction, which restricts them from having just family members, right? So now the ADU is a, is a state law that's gonna preempt that. But how do we reconcile that? Do we get something from the town to kind of wipe out that title issue? Is there, is there, have you heard of anything? Because that's gonna be a major title issue.
Yeah, we've been talking internally about, in the office, this, yeah, right, this EFLA that we've had on the book. I think we should be careful about getting too much in the weeds tonight. But, yeah, we, right, the EFLA that we have in our book and then, right, with the state law that passed a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
We are kind of working our way through some of that. I hear what you're saying. It is something in our office that we've discussed internally. Maybe at our next meeting, we might, Aaron might have a better, better response to the kind of question, but, yeah.
Do we have town, is town, is that something?
Yeah, went to town council, because on a state level, I mean, there's a lot of communities that have EFAs, right?
Right, they call, right, they, right, communities call them different, nay, you're right.
Yeah, we modeled those off the peabody zoning and we did it probably 20 years ago.
Sure.
And it would seem to be that, that needs to be addressed statewide. How do we, how do we handle that?
The state question I can't answer, at least statewide. But for the town of Danvers, I think we are, that is, as we kind of refer to at a future town meeting, I think it's something that we are gonna have to like reconcile in our zoning bylaw with the EFLA and the ADU law. Kind of how we're referring to the lighting piece. We probably would have to change some of the stuff, but.
And the ADU does not discriminate as far as any zone in town, so it can be in any zone?
No, it could only be in single-family residential, not any zone.
Well.
Yeah, it could only, so, so it would be R1, R2, R3.
Right, residential zones.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So you can't say that because you're in R3, you can't have that?
Oh, yeah, right. I think when you, when you said any zone though, it wasn't
Yeah, I meant residence.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yep, so R1, R2, R3, yep.
And you can't, you can't, on a local level, change that anyway. You have to
That's right.
So you're really just gonna follow what the state law says?
Think you have to.
Right, so you're not gonna have any other, you're, you're gonna do away with your EFLA and follow state law.
Prospectively at least, right?
Right.
Prospectively, but what happens for, are you asking about what happens for like deed restricted?
Well, that's the problem that I'm talking about from a
That one I can't
That's a title problem that we have to deal with.
At this moment, I can't speak to that piece as much as the new ADU stuff. But it is, it does bring up kind of issues, right? In that we have something on the books for 20 years. It's deed restricted, we have this new state law. I think where we sit in our office is that over the next couple of months or until our next special town meeting, it's something that I think we're gonna have to do something about.
Who's the special permit granting authority?
For which, for which item?
For the ADUs.
There is none right now, because there's
How do you, how do you regulate them? I mean, at least know that they're in existence so that you can tax them like the town does with the EFAs?
Sure.
And, and insure against issues. And part of the reason why you created that was to identify, you know, the extra, who's living next door? How many of these do we have in our neighborhood?
I don't think there's a way to limit neighborhood, I don't think, there's not a way to limit that.
Well.
But if
I'm not, I'm not necessarily, I think we need more information. And I'm wondering if, if there is a, maybe a grant available. We've had presentations by people in the know for zoning and other things before. Would that be worthwhile to present to staff, volunteers, board members and townspeople so we know what we're dealing with?
You're talking, the, the new ADU law, you just like to be informed about that, yeah. I mean, I don't know if tonight not be the best, tonight might, is probably not the night to do it, but
No, I'm just planning in advance for our next meeting if we're gonna talk about it.
Sure.
So that we could have, you know, you know, I don't expect you to parrot back the law to me and then for everyone to understand that, because there's so many different things that
Right.
People are gonna be concerned about.
Briefly, the state law, if you're, if you, where our office sits and, from the state, it's any single-family zoning district, so R1, R2, R3. If you're 900 square feet or below and you meet all the dimensional requirements from, in terms of the standard setbacks, that you have the ability, you could get a building permit.
It's a law, it's a matter of right.
It's a by right.
But if, but if you're not building something and you have a split,
Yep.
what do you have to do to get, do you still have to get a building permit? If you're, if you're gonna
You just still have to do building, you just still have to get a building permit if you're, whatever you're doing, you know, whatever.
But if you're not building, right? So I have a split and I just make my basement, I have two ways out. Is there a town involvement or not?
So, I can't answer every, I did every, every, but I'm hearing what you're saying.
Because if there's no board to review it, other than a building inspector, if someone's gonna actually build something.
Right, right.
If I already have a split
Right.
And I already have two ways out.
Yep. So it sounds like, Jim, that you, and I, I don't disagree, where the board sits, part of this reviewing this housing production plan, a kind of overview or summary of this new state law would be beneficial? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, especially if we're trying to count and encourage more housing. If people are gonna be able to do this without, not necessarily be regulated, but even be counted.
Yeah.
I mean, let's face it, a big motivation of the EFLA was to kind of legitimize these situations, encourage the family situation, but also the town knows about them, right? So we know that you've got two families living in this property and we can increase your real estate tax.
I think we're
Which is fine, that's a byproduct. But we also know that now, counting on our housing stock, we provided for essentially housing for another family member that maybe couldn't afford it.
Right.
So that's gonna go toward our numbers for increasing this. If we don't have some type of way of counting this, what the hell are we doing?
Potent, I don't know 100% in terms of that denominator, if that's your, I don't know if the
How do you capture the information? I, I mean, how do you regulate it without really regulating it?
Right.
You regulate it on a local level, like we do with, you know, a lot of the stuff we do. The, the building permits, a local building permit based on state law, right? The building code.
Right.
But there's regulations to a certain degree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To capture that information.
Yeah, the, the detached is obviously simpler and cleaner than the, right, the attached, when it's in the, on the third floor or in the
Another situation, like I said, where there was, where it's in a, it's a basement where it doesn't necessarily call for a building permit. Is there, is there a procedure for issuing a CO or something like that?
I, I think that that would always be required, but I can't speak for the building commissioner, but
Does it say that in the ADU legislation? Do you know?
I do not know that specific question about that. They would be required, they would require, at lea, at least the detached units would require
Detached units require separate utilities?
Would require such, I don't know. Okay. That's the state law, so.
Yeah, I just want to say something, you can use the mic. Did you wanna? Did you want to use the mic and say something? Yeah, just If you can identify yourself.
Lois McKenzie, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. The DCUs, they're gonna be able to have separate ADUs, sorry. They're gonna be able to have separate utilities?
That's, I think that, I think that's a possibility, yes.
Because EFAs aren't allowed that. They have to run off the same heat, the same water, same electric.
I think it's something that we're trying to
So that's something that's gotta be figured out.
Yeah, it does, for sure.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like we have some, there's definitely, you know, I think we could use some additional, I think some information, especially about the interplay of the, the new ADU rules and the, and how it affects EFAs and how it's all sort of fits into the housing production plan too.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm hearing, hearing you folks.
Do you have anything further on that or?
No, like I said, I mean, just in anticipation of that meeting, I think we gotta, there's a lot of stuff we gotta pull out of there and figure out, as a practical matter, how you folks are gonna manage it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And how much leeway, one thing I'm wondering, like, how much leeway does this, does this, you know, either leeway or how much discretion does the state provide in terms of the ability to regulate as well? So how much does the, you know, in terms of permit granting authorities, that sort of thing? What is the, you know?
Well, if it's by, if it's a by right project, you know, it's not
Right, you can still have a by right project, but there's still, I mean, there's, there's still some potential, some regulatory.
It would mostly be, a lot of these questions, I think, and concerns are, they fall under the bill, the building, the building code, to be honest. The questions that have been discussed tonight, to be honest.
But just as a, I guess as a philosophical question.
Sure.
I know the intent is to provide more housing, right? And, and to provide
Right, like
Low-income housing or income that
It's basically a mix of, it's like, it's a mix of housing, like, housing type, right? I mean, that's really general.
So I guess if you're successful, what is success? Is success increasing the housing stock by 10%? Or worst-case scenario, you're allowing every house, residential house, to have an additional dwelling unit in, in town. So how would that affect? Because we hear it, anytime we put a six-lot subdivision in, water, schools, traffic. Worst-case scenario, this takes off, oh, great, I'm gonna live in Danvers, in my parents' basement. And now, or it doesn't even have to be my kid, it can be anybody.
That's right.
And I can charge them rent.
That's right.
And now we have extra everything. And now we go from a population of 25,000 to 50,000 in 10 years. Is that really what we're trying to accomplish? So we're not the small rural town that we, and we haven't been for a long time, but we get a lot of committees that are anti or don't want any more development. But by this process, we're not building more, we're just including more people. So I guess, so I guess that could accomplish, while we're trying to do a good thing, have more affordable housing. Worst-case scenario, we have more housing, more traffic, more, more schools, more water usage, more everything, because the state thinks it's a great idea. And we can't do anything about it on a local level.
I think that, I think that last sentence is kind of the sentence, yeah.
So I'm just wondering what kind of, I mean, pushback they got when they were passing this? Or anyone ever asked that question?
I mean, I'm, I'm sure that there was concern, but, but, you know, where we sit today, kind of your last sentence, there's not too much we can, you know, if you, if you meet the five to six bullet point requirements.
I think it's worthy of a conversation, I think it's worthy of a conversation with, you know, with, between, with town staff as well as inclusion, inclusion of town council to see what, sort of, what this, what this all means.
Sure.
If someone wanted to put a 300-unit building on any properties, name a piece of property that's either reused or it's vacant, all the questions would come up. What about water usage? What about our schools? What about traffic? And now we cannot even ask those questions. Because we don't have any ability.
If, if they are not within any of the setbacks, they're smaller than 900 square feet, if they're, you know, if they meet the five things, yeah.
But if, but if 10 people on my street, and there's a lot of splits, decide to do this and they can rent out their basements for, hey, maybe it's two bedrooms? Is it just limited to one or it can be two?
You can only have one ADU per lot.
But how many bedrooms?
It's square footage.
Yeah, it's not, it's not bedroom.
So 900 square feet, I could have two or three bedrooms.
Yeah.
And under Danvers, if you look at the rates for low-income housing, Section 8 housing on the North Shore, three-bedroom, they get $3,500 a month. So I'm not sure that's, is that what we're encouraging? And if we do that, that's three more cars in my driveway, right? Or on, in front of my house.
Potentially.
In front of my house, on, if I don't have a big driveway and a garage, now they're on the street. So I'm just playing devil's advocate. How is that gonna, how could that play out? That could play out. Hey, we wanna go, have our kids go to Danvers schools, this is great. Let's all go to Danvers and, and live in someone else's house.
Yeah, yeah, that is a possibility, yes. But I don't know if we're gonna answer, I don't know if tonight is, yeah, I hear, it sounds like
We got extra time, we didn't make
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I don't know if, it wasn't really an agenda item, I just didn't want to
This is a preview of
Yeah. I guess where I sit, right, it seems like
Be careful what you wish for, I guess.
The housing production, it sounds to me like, yeah, and it just, I think that the ADU stuff is a piece of the housing production plan, but it sounds like there is definitely questions related to the, the new ADU law. Which I, which I understand it is Which I under, which I understand it is quite different than, although we do, like, we do have ADUs in town, so they're not. They do have some similarities, but, um, they are, the ADU stuff is much less rigid than the ADU stuff. The ADU stuff, I mean, the AFLA right now on the books is, you have to have a blood relative.
Right, so, yeah.
You know, so it's pretty limited.
Can you ask for more than 900 feet?
So that's the, so that's the issue, I don't necessarily wanna get into it, but, um, our office is. We do have to put, so, we are in the press, not, we do have to put regulations on the book. We don't have any right now, because we're waiting for the state to come out with their guidelines and stuff. But, um, we are, that's something that we would put on a future special town meeting, is regulations for folks. Who didn't meet the setbacks, who wanna go above 900, and that's when you would, you know, start to see, you, a board. Either this or ZBA would see some of those, potentially.
And the state guidelines could also, I, I think, you know, when, when the state guidelines come out, I guess that could inform ultimately what the state, I mean, what the, what, what we can do as a town, is that?
It's on the website, so the state guidelines say 900 square feet, and then there's things that the municipalities can do, they can have a site plan review, they can title five requirements. Regulations concerning dimensional setbacks and bulk of height of structures, and they can regulate short term rentals, and then there's a list of things they also cannot do.
Right.
Okay.
So.
The 900 square feet is on their website. It says, be they're no larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller.
Uh, whichever is smaller, okay.
But is there ability to get a waiver, like in, the AFLA now.
The idea, the idea.
ZBA approves more than 750 all the time.
Right.
Right, so the idea would be that folks would have the opportunity to request a waiver and/or variance, or, but, that, as we speak right now, that is not on the. Though the way you could do an AFLA, or, and, don't wanna get into it, but the only way you could do the ADU in town now, as we speak. Is meeting those five or six.
Okay.
Bullet points. We don't have regulations if you don't, even if you don't meet one of them.
Yeah.
We would not grant a building permit for the, so.
But if you're not building anything.
Sure, that internal one is a kind of different animal, but.
Yeah.
I'm hearing your kind of question about that.
How do you even regulate it, or even know it's there?
I mean, they would a hundred percent need a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, for the tenant. So there'd be an inspection.
Yep.
Pay you 50 bucks and they come and inspect the egresses and your smoke and CO detectors. But other than that.
It's possible that it's that, but I wouldn't, I'm not sure what the building, I'm not, I can't speak for the building commissioner, but it's possible that that's it, but it, I've assumed that it might be a little bit more than that, but I, I can't speak to it.
Would we wanna regulate where people have the opportunity to potentially increase the square footage, do we wanna regulate it by zone? So maybe in zone district one, we only can go 10,000 to be able to go so high, 20,000 in two, 30,000 in three?
I think that's a conversation that we'd like to have with, um, at the appropriate time, yeah.
I think we have a number of things that we wanna, that are, are, I think a number of questions that we will, that we'll have when we, when we talk about this. And so I think that, um, you know, 'cause I think there is gonna be a real interplay between this and the, and the housing development plan, so.
And the, and the special permit granting authority would still be the ZBA on the potential ability to have some leeway, it sounds like?
Well, we haven't really, we have, I think we're, our office sits, not to speak for the plan director, but the idea would be when this, all of the, your sort of zoning, um, questions would probably, would be part of a, the public process with the board and the, the town residents. That would be part of, like, the public process, that hasn't been determined, um, but maybe potentially in the fall, or, um.
Well, I don't know why we're waiting to the fall, if it's in practice right now.
Well, 'cause it would have to, it would, it's not gonna be an annual, so the only, we can only change the zoning by law at, you know, at a town meeting, so we'd have to do it, we'd have to open a public hearing.
But I think we need to understand, I mean, a lot of these, you know, special town meetings that we have, we're, we're, we're talking about them for months.
Right.
And on this, it doesn't sound like, you know, we're gonna need the building inspector here, we're gonna need town council here, we're gonna need probably both boards, the ZBA and the planning board.
Sure.
Planning staff. And maybe an expert on, on the law, that can, whether it's Robrowski, whoever, I think that's his line, am I right?
No, you're right.
Uh, you know, that can, can, can help us with these issues, and, and if we don't have any control or any, anything. Then, you know, granted, you're gonna regulate it through either, um, you know, a tenant, uh, occupancy certificate, assuming someone gets it. Unless their neighbor says, hey, there's three new cars next door, uh, what's going on over there?
They could have three next, yeah, they could have that anyway.
I'm gonna start charging my kids.
Yeah. But, uh.
Yeah, but I think, there's a lot of, lot of things that.
It's, so it seems like out of this, though, there's kind of, I kinda, I, I would come mentalize into kind of two different things, so it's a housing production plan, which ADU is a part of it. I would say that the, a significant majority of our conversation, though, tonight, was probably more related to a zoning, zoning language related to the ADU and not. The, they're obviously both connected, but the ADU stuff is probably a portion or a chapter or section of the housing production plan, and it, you know, obviously this law is. Is new and will change the landscape a little bit. But the, a significant majority of the comments tonight, to me, are more related to how do we wanna, the zoning piece and what we wanna put eventually in our, in our bylaw, and. Not necessarily the housing production plan, if that makes, but maybe I'm, that just means.
But would you be counting these as units, as housing units?
That is a question that I originally didn't think so, but what I've, I mean, I'm, but I've.
I would think you would.
But I think that that's a possibility, so that does.
Accessory dwelling, dwelling unit.
Right.
That's gonna help your numbers.
Well, not necessarily, because it increases, it, actually it won't. Because they're not, they wouldn't be on SHI, and you would just be adding to the denominator, but I don't wanna get into the weeds of it too much, but it actually would be probably negative, to be honest. So, anyways, whatever.
All right. Lots to, lots to talk about.
Yeah, I just, without it being on the agenda, I didn't, just don't wanna get too much.
We can't get into too much detail, but, but I think we, it's good to at least preview some of this and some of the questions.
I mean, I think, you know, if Aaron's the one who comes, and he could, he could talk about the subject for quite a while, so.
We have a resident question, just, yeah.
Hi, Lauren Steves, um, town meeting member precinct three. Jim, I think you make a lot of good points. I think the state passed legislation without dotting their i's and crossing their t's and left us with a lot of, like, unknown answers that we should have the answers to. In regards to the housing production plan, I know it was mentioned that it was gonna be discussed at the next meeting and then potentially voted on. When I went to the housing production meeting, Aaron simply stated, well, this is just, you know, we're just talking about it. So my question would be, if it comes here and it gets voted on, who does it go to after, if, say it passes, or say you make tweaks, adjustments, whatever, who does it go to then?
I believe that there are tweaks, or there are modifications that it would ultimately have to go back, I believe, and not just be if I'm incorrect, but I think it would have to, it would go back to the, the trust, the housing trust. I believe that they would have to.
Go back to the, to the, the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust?
I believe so.
So I guess my, the.
That'd have to be reconciled in some manner, right?
Okay, so, so say whatever plan.
And then it goes to select board after.
Does this go to town meeting for a vote?
I don't believe so, no, no.
So who votes this in, is my question? Cause.
Um, I don't know, I believe that, I know the board, I know, I was told that the board, the planning board definitely does. I don't know if it has to go to select board, but we could have that obviously answered by the next meeting.
Because in conjunction with this ADU law, with what you said, it doesn't go towards our SHI, nor.
I, the units themselves, so, right, if someone does a detached unit, or the, the, in, internal unit that Jim was describing in his scenarios. They're not, those units are not on the SHI, they're not deed restricted in any manner. I mean, they might, you know, because it's 750 square feet or 600, they're smaller and they'll be cheaper, but they're not, they're not considered, they're not affordable, so they're not gonna be on our.
Right, so, so that's my point, though, is so by right in every residential district, and everyone can put an ADU, which then adds to our housing, uh, in total in this town, doesn't go towards our SHI.
That's right.
And then we're proposing.
I don't know for su- sure, but I've been hea- I, when this first was passed, a couple, um, I don't wanna say that for certain, but I've been hearing that it's, there's potential that the units won't, that the, that they'll count towards our total, our total number, right, for the denominator.
I think it's a fair question to ask, though, in terms of what the, what the effects of the, of ADUs are in terms of for housing inventory and.
Because we're talking, you know, the big thing is we gotta meet the 10%, we have to meet the 10%, right? So you add ADUs, which may or may not count towards SHI, and then you have this proposed wanting to allow two families by right in every residential zone in this housing production plan, which then also doesn't count towards SHI. So you're putting our inventory way up here, and then you're bringing down the affordable, and it's, it's not good. It's not good.
From.
For the temp, for the, for us to meet the 10%, you're, you're putting all of this housing out, but none of it's meeting the SHI or the affordable housing, so.
From that standpoint, I guess, looking at it from that angle, right, that I guess, you could view that as a, a con, yes, I guess.
All right.
Because we have, we have to meet the 10%, it's a mandated law by the state for the affordable housing.
Yep.
So it's.
If we don't, then you can have a 40B come in.
Right, but my point is.
Plenty of towns that don't meet it.
Right, but my point is, is that adding all of these, these ADUs and these two families by right, it, it increases the inventory, but then the affordable housing, then it's.
That's gonna happen in every town. Every town, look at the Tops sales and the Boxfords and the Marbleheads, they don't have 10%. And now if you allow them also to do the same thing that we can do, they're all, everyone's gonna have the same problem. It's just gonna, it, it reaches a point of no return, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Right, and that, that's kind of my point, is, I mean, the ADU was, was put on us by the state, we don't have any say in that. But we do have a say in this housing production plan and wanting to rezone all our residential units into allowing two families by right.
I believe that was just, that was just a potential recommendation, isn't, I believe.
That's part of the housing production plan, so if that were to pass, then yes, that would be part of it.
That would, but just for informational, um, that would, that's just a, a recommendation that the town could consider, that, you know, if we were to do that, we would have to go, that would have to be a town meeting vote, and there'd be a public hearing.
So that was my question.
Yeah, that would be, anything in the plan is just, there, it's just recommendations or they're op, so, you know, as the town of Danvers, if you want to increase the housing mix, or, you know, our goals that are listed in the plan. Everything in that plan is sort of, is, is a guideline or recommendations. If any of those recommendations or guidelines were to be adopted, it would ultimately have to be a public hearing with the planning board as a zoning amendment, and then it would have to be voted on by town meeting.
That was kind of my question, based on whose vote, you know, who's voting on this, this plan.
Sure.
So that was.
So I think it depends on what it, in terms of whether it's a recommendation, just a, just a pure recommendation, or if it's actually sort of a call to action.
To be, right, like, to have our, our bylaws.
Even if the policy was, we wanted 30 units in every single unit parcel in town, you know, it would have to go to town meeting and it very likely, you know. So I understand the kind of, the concern, um, but there are, there is a public process and, uh, that, that plan isn't, it's just, it's sort of like a way for the town to look at. What are, what are options or the tools on a toolbox, right? So I wouldn't necessarily, um, even if it, if this is adopted, or this is approved by the board, if town meeting ultimately doesn't wanna move for, it doesn't mean that any of the recommendations will ever even necessarily move forward, but.
I think we still have a board.
My question, if, if the zoning bylaws were to be recommended, to be changed, who approves that?
Right, it would ultimately go to town. It would ultimately go to town meeting, but it comes also from our recommendation as well, so I think it's still, the, this, the process of us talking through and talking through with members of the public, I think is really important too.
Yeah.
Because then that will ultimately result in the recommendation.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That goes forward.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a, a fair amount of coming, uh, coming interactions. Any other questions for members of the public?
I'll be brief.
And we'll have plenty of time to talk about this at our.
Yeah, Jim Moros telling me, do you remember precinct three? I, I just wanna, I mean, to, to, to everyone's point.
Yeah.
I mean, the state has been putting out a lot of mandates lately, and it's, it's kinda, you know, there's been a lot of problems with them, they've had a right and emergency fixes for several of them in, in the recent, you know, current future here. And, and I really think we should push back on this, I really, I don't know what the other towns are doing, but that 3A MBTA zoning, all sorts, all sorts of cities and towns are pushing back, and the state ought to just say, hey, it's an unfunded mandate, that's not even legal in this state. So, we really should push back because to the points that Lauren made, it's just gonna increase our housing and we're gonna lose our 10% and, and everything else. We gotta push back, this is crazy.
All right, thank you. Anything else from any other members here? Okay, so our next, yeah, if you have a question, sure.
Um, where are we? Karen Nastick, 40 years in town, Locksley Road. Hi.
Hi.
I'm curious how the, I wanted to know what was going on with Folly Hill, so I, I Googled it, and it came up with 600 apartments? 600 apartments. And that, and we're already above the mandate for the town.
I'm like.
For the laws.
I could comment.
Yeah, um.
I believe that she's referring to that Trask Lane project.
Right.
And I believe it's 440 apartments, or unit, or multifamily units.
Right.
And, um, it's actually in the town of Beverley, the city of Beverly.
In the city of Beverly.
So it.
The city of Beverly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, but it's, but we'll, we'll still been, but, but there's still a, you know, but related to this, there's a, there's a request for a partial release of the covenant, that was on the agenda for today, uh, and it's actually being continued to the 25th of March.
And that sounds, what does that mean, release of covenant?
Well, it's dealing with the release of, of a, of a, of a covenant that was done back in 1972, when the area was first developed. And when it relates to transportation improvements and such, we've, it's been discussed at several, you know, meetings previously, and we'll be, and on, at our next meeting, we'll be talking about, uh, the results of a, of a peer review traffic study that was done, in terms of effects of traffic.
I wanted to make a request, 'cause a lot of times you, you must have said Danvers Housing Production Plan. Five, six times tonight, and we asked for like a, somebody asked for like a definition. I would think it wouldn't be that difficult to explain what that is. And try not to just throw out ADUs, just make sure, because you're, you're getting new viewers all the time, to define these things.
Um, on the agenda when we do the HPP stuff, I will write out, I will not just write HPP for informational purposes.
So at our meeting, when we'll, when we talk about the housing production plan, we'll walk in, we'll walk through sort of what the, you know, what it is, sort of the, the parameters of the study. And we'll also, you know, be mindful of, of acronyms as well, in terms of talking about accessory dwelling units, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other proposals going up for downtown? That are coming up? There must be a lot.
I guess.
Nothing in terms of the agenda, but anything else that we have that is, that, that.
I can only speak to applications that have been submitted, there is an application for a project at 61 High Street that we'll be discussing at the March 25th meeting.
Okay.
Any other way to describe 61 High Street?
It's across from a gas station and a fire station.
Great.
Yep, next to the telephone building.
That's what I mean. Just a, just so people have a frame of reference. Because it's so easy to say that, thank you.
Of course, thank you. Anything further at all?
I think we went, I think we went through.
We covered a lot of.
I think we covered a lot of non-agenda items, so.
Well, we covered, we, a lot of it was, was previews of coming soon, so it's always good.
That's true.
It's always good to know it's on the agenda, what's, what's gonna be coming up, and so we can anticipate, uh, also, so that, so that we all and so taft, since, so staff can anticipate what's gonna be coming up and what questions we'll have, so I think this is good.
No, it is, it's just, yeah.
And appreciate members of the public, uh, raising questions as well, so that's all good, so, okay. Anything, if there's anything else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to pass the minutes?
Oh, we did pass the minutes already.
Just one thing on, on Mr. Moros's comments, I think the difference here, Mr. Moros is, this is a state law that's already been passed, so the difference between this and the MBTA law, the MBTA law required the towns to do something. In this instance, you know, they've already passed the law, so we didn't do, if we didn't do something to comply with that law, to put the zoning in, then we would be in violation of that law. But by putting this overlay on all the towns, this ADU law, we're not required to do anything. So I don't think if we say we're not gonna follow the law, it's gonna do any good, because it's already been passed. So it's, it's, it's different than the, um, MBTA, where the, that required every town of the 170 towns, I think, in the Commonwealth, to do a certain zoning to comply with that law. That's not. That's not what we're talking about here, this law's already been passed, so we have to deal with the law that we're dealing with. And I think we need to get some clarity on how we're going to deal with it sooner rather than later, which is going to, you know, factor on the staff, and I, I think it's, you know, it's going to go a long way toward, you know, this housing production report, because whether we count it or not, it's going to have a devastating impact on it, if we count all the units.
That's something that I've sort of recently heard, I didn't think that that was initially, but I've been hearing that more, maybe Aaron and Brian could probably speak to it, but at this moment, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's a definitive answer on that, if they are counting as, you know, as units. But I've been hearing rumors or rumblings that that's a possibility in the planning world, so.
I would think, if I have my unit, and I meet all the, you know, I've got my certificate of occupancy for my rental unit, you know, would I be able to get Section 8 housing in there? Potentially. Because I have a housing unit, if I meet and I get a Section 8 tenant in there, now I have a low income tenant that we can count, which I guess you'd have to.
But that wouldn't count towards SHI, having Section 8, on it, on the, just on that by, by itself, you know what I mean? That wouldn't be a deed restricted unit if you're accepting a Section 8 vouchers, but I think we're getting in the weeds a little bit, but. But here.
But I could do that.
It's possible, yeah, seems that way.
How would you be able to count it, though, unless you had input from Danvers Housing? You know what I mean?
There's a lot of, it's, there's a decent amount of layers to it, for sure, especially the, the ones that you, you keep bringing up, the interesting scenario. For me, the, right, the, in, the, the attached or internal ones are like the complicated ones, even from like the, the utility piece, right? If you want to do a unit in the attic, they have to do all new utilities, that seems, you know, not connected to the prime house, so it seemed, it gets, it's stuff that we need to kind of figure out, so.
Yes. You identify yourself for the record?
John Bouchard, Crestline Circle, to Jim's point, wouldn't these units require a kitchen?
They wouldn't, yes.
So you just can't rent the three bedrooms out from the bottom of your house?
It's just like the EFLR, the EFLR is extended family living, so you have a separate kitchen, separate bedroom, and separate entrance.
So the separate kitchen would require a building permit to put the new kitchen in.
Right.
Which is where you'd get your scoring.
But, there's plenty of houses that might have two stoves in them.
Right.
You can have six stoves in your house. I mean, some families have that. Two or three stoves in their house.
Yeah.
They do a lot of cooking.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, if, on those that don't, then you'd, you'd be able to get a count through the planning department, because they'd apply for a kitchen.
I mean, the whole idea with the EFLR is to try to capture some of these, to make sure they're insured properly, also account them for housing stock and to tax them, you know, where you have that extra unit. Now, if we have all these extra units and we don't know where they are.
They're still going to always need a certificate of occupancy, so I think where I sit.
I understand that, but you can be sure there's plenty of rentals, properties out there that don't have certificates of occupancy.
But they probably, I mean, yeah, you don't have to get into certain.
There are.
No, I, no, I'm not disagreeing, but.
When we lived in DC, when we lived in DC, there was always, there were a lot, you live in row houses, there were a lot of folks who had that first, you know, that basement row, you know, that would rent out to students or whoever.
And Danvers is not like Beverly, Beverly requires you to get one for every unit. I have, I had a four family for 30 years, I just sold it. And all we had to do was get a certificate once every five years, check the egresses and the smokes and COs. They barely even walked into the place, in the units, they barely checked them out. If you're in Beverly, anytime you rent a unit, you have to get one. That's not the law in Danvers.
Yep.
And there's a lot of apartments. Sure, people don't get them every time they turn over the apartments, unless you have to get it as part of a Section 8 tenant. So, it seems like there's a lot, a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Very good, so, lots to, lots to come. All right. All right, anything further at all, Josh?
I think that's it.
All right, members of the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Mike? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.